United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the roll call.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Bridge.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Mertz.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Finzler.
Here.
Herrick.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Dobek.
Here.
Nowiki.
Here.
Emmert.
Here.
And say third. I'm the president.
Okay, we have no proclamations or commendations. We'll call for the approval of the minutes. Esther Dahlbeck moved.
Yep, I so moved.
Seconded by Mr. Bridge. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. The minutes are approved.
Item six is a consent agenda. There's two items at your desk tonight, a referral to license and fees and a referral to the Public Works Committee.
Motion by Mr. Finzler to move and approve with the additions, seconded by Esther Dahlbeck. And what would you like polled out?
I'd like to make a motion to discuss item 6.8.
6.8, very good. 6.8 to be polled, anything else? Say none. We'll ask for the approval of all but 6.8. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. We have the consent agenda approved. 6.8 now.
6.8 is SAHA's requests regarding renovating their parking lot. It's being referred to Finance Committee.
Motion approved.
Okay, mission, motion by, who was that?
Bender and McKenzie.
Bender and McKenzie, good. Discussion, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, well, what I'd like to do is amend this to also add the SYO to this particular item regarding parking lots. The reason I say that is both organizations are, have need for parking lots at their facilities now because of the new construction at SAHA and the Brownfield project that we've taken on and assisting them. And the ball fields now, the next, the next step in the project there is, is the parking plan and, and, and the parking issues that need to be dealt with. So it occurs to me that, since both organizations are similar in character, both involve infrastructure at each of the facilities that are good for the city because each, each of these organizations is bringing in tournaments to the city, fill-in motel rooms, bringing business to Superior. And so I think it would be more cost-effective if, first of all, refer this to both Public Works and Finance. So Finance, we can investigate ways to find, ways to fund these. And then secondly, Public Works can be in on the ground floor planning the parking lots in both places so that if, if we are able to do the work, we can have everything planned and the materials arranged in such a way that we would be cost-effective. So I would like to add the consideration of the SYO parking situation along with the SAHA parking situation.
Okay, we have a motion to amend that we include SYO organization and a refer to Finance Committee and Public Works. Do we have a second to?
No. Can I just clarify, are you talking Public Works Committee or Department?
The Committee.
Committee.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to amend.
Esther.
And Esther.
I have a question, am I missing something here? Is this the city's obligation to fix these parking lots? Because I, if that's the case, I have two youth organizations that would like parking lots also.
Okay, part of the discussion, anyone else? Mr. Anderson.
Well, we've started down this road and I, you know, we've, we've got these two organizations that we know have hundreds of kids involved in both places. They, they are partly supported out of the hotel motel tax because they bring tournaments here. And they've both, they're both making significant improvements to infrastructure. SYO donated a concession stand to the city. It's, that's our property, it's on our property. And they took quite a hit financially on doing that one. And so I think, and I don't have anything, a problem with what you're saying Esther, but these two organizations, at least now, are things we can do now. We can certainly discuss other organizations in the future, but for right now, these two organizations to me seem to be at a juncture where they can be mutually beneficial.
Mr. Bridge.
Well, you know, I think we need to get this into committee and out of here to talk about it, but I will add, as long as we're having the discussion right now, that while they're certainly worthy organizations, I, I think the idea of just donating, donating city labor is a pretty dangerous precedent to start with here. You know, I mean, investigating where we can find some funding to pay for that labor probably is, you know, that's in my mind, an okay way to go about it, but donating labor is, we're gonna have everybody in town looking for free labor.
So, do we have a second to send this to committee and this where this discussion take place, or?
A second.
Okay, Esther, there'll be a second to send to committee. Let me read the amended motion. SAHA, excuse me, SAHA requests regarding renovating their parking lot, including, will include in that motion SYO organization and then they would refer to Finance Committee and Public Works Committee. Probably not ready as smooth, it'll end, end up in the minutes, but, okay, we have a second by Esther Dahlbeck. We have a motion by Counselor Anderson to refer this to committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Off to committee.
Okay, we're on to item seven, business by department heads. 7.1, City Attorney Pearl is presenting a proposed contract with the Animal Rescue Federation for the continued use of ARF services and management for the city's animal shelter effective January 1st, 2010 through December 31st, 2011.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Herrick and Mr. McKenzie. I thought you'd beat Mr. Herrick. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. 7.1 passes.
7.2, Police Chief Peters is requesting approval to, of the amended St. Louis County Mutual Aid Agreement.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Bridge, seconded by Counselor Dahlbeck. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. 7.2 passes.
7.3, Police Chief Peters is requesting Council award the purchase of two motorcycles to the most qualified bidder, Harley-Davidson Sports Center Duluth, for the bid amount of $37,545.20.
Motion by Counselor Dahlbeck, seconded by Counselor Bridge. Any discussion? Who wants to ride these bikes first?
I do.
Okay, we'll have Esther. Do you can?
I'd take the list.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was no more, I know what the motion done, we passed, okay. Chief.
I just had a comment that I'd handed out tonight before the meeting to counselors, the revised bid from one of the dealerships. However, it was only $45 less than the bid from Duluth, Minnesota. And we like to keep the business local. It saves us a lot of staff time and money and transportation costs and officer wages to be able to do our service worker warranty work right here in the Twin Ports. So I appreciate the support of the council on that. And of course, we also like to buy American and Harley-Davidson is made in Wisconsin.
Thank you, Chief. I saw your light. Mr. Olson.
I would just like to echo your thoughts, Pete. Earlier this year, we passed a resolution to promote buying American-made products and this is a step in the right direction in the fact of buying local too. There are some of those employees up at Harley-Davidson that live in Superior, so it's a good thing that we do this.
Okay, Mr. Anderson.
Chief, I, you know, years ago, several years ago, Harley-Davidson had a program where they were leasing motorcycles to agencies for like a dollar a year or something like that. Is it my understanding now that that program has gone away and this is why we're going to purchase now instead?
That's correct. When we first had the council approve the project that we would add two motorcycles to our department back in 2001, I believe it was, there was a very low lease number. As businesses change, the lease costs have gone up and up. And when I met with my staff and actually talked to Finance Director Vito, we determined we would probably save by not leasing probably $10,000 over the next 10 years by purchasing outright. The leases had gone up substantially. It was almost $5,000 a year to lease if we would continue. But that's a good question, thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to 7.4.
7.4, Assistant Public Works Director Getzmann is requesting to award the purchase, purchase of furniture for the Bong Airport Terminal Building.
Motion to approve. Motion by Counselor Dahlbeck, seconded by Counselor Bender. Discussion, when we have Mr. Kim Kulp.
Hello, I'm Kim Kulp, 1301 Baxter Avenue. And I just have some concerns as how the bid was let and done. Our interior designer worked with the airport staff to find the, the right furniture to fit in that environment, to give a high-quality product with a long lifespan. The bid was then let and very vaguely written, very vaguely written. One of the competitors came in significantly under us with considerably lower quality products. And then after they had the low bid, because they were the low bidder, they can come in and raise the quality of their products and raise what they're doing. The equivalence of this would be if Public Works needed a new truck, they put a bid out that says "truck." One bidder has what they want for a good highway truck, another bidder comes in with a Ford Ranger, which obviously is not going to serve their needs. And when the low bid gets the bid, then they can come in with the higher-priced equipment. And I see that the, this bid was let very poorly. I mean, very poor wording in the bid, very poor specs on what was required to meet the needs at the airport. So consequently, they are going to get a level of furniture with this bid that will be short-term, you're saving money. Over the long-term, it's not good savings to buy lower-quality stuff. And I think anybody who's ever purchased furniture knows the difference between when you buy the very inexpensive stuff and the better-quality furniture. And what we bid was good quality, none of, no Cadillacs, but very good, good-quality product. And thank you for your time.
Kim, I have a question for you. So in the bid, there was not a specific product name?
No.
Normally, normally bids will specify a specific product.
No, it was like.
And everybody's bidding on the same product.
No, it was not.
So there was no definition of product?
No.
In that bid?
It was like desk. And a desk can be anything from contact paper and sawdust that you buy, you know, at the wholesale place, all the way up to, you know, solid mahogany, which we didn't bid, obviously. And, but there was just a very vaguely written bid. It, it fell within specs of, you know, but, you know, you just have to be careful when you spec things. I don't think they can specify, say, Lazy Boy for a product line, but you can spec some of the quality of materials that need to go in the product, the quality, well, you work with furniture.
Right.
You know the difference between the.
I, I have been involved in bids like that where you don't know what product they want and what price range.
Right.
Exactly, you're right, Kim.
So, well, I just had to give my two cents worth in on it. And in the future, you know, do the bidding a little bit better. You know, specify the quality of products that, that are required. You know, because our interior designer, she worked long and hard on this year to get the best quality product in there for the money and then to be just totally undercut by, what, $20,000? And then the low bidder can come back and up it? You know, how is that?
If you don't mind, I'll ask another question. How can the low bidder up it?
You would have to have.
No?
The Assistant Public Works Director.
The low bidder is, we're able to negotiate a few things with the low bidder and once they've secured a contract with the city. And I mean, it would work that same way with Mr. Kulp if we would have awarded the contract to him.
Yeah.
But, you know, they, they raised $8,000, last I heard, so, you know, they're still under our bid.
And I guess to clarify, in talking with Nancy Brown, who put this bid spec together, I mean, the, the bid was fairly open and she indicated here in the email that she, specifications included requirements for commercial-grade furniture, durable, appropriate for public setting, had a certain period warranty. And she likens bidding this furniture to buying a car that we would have, you know, the same common requirements of all cars, have four tires and engine, but people were told at the pre-bid meeting that we didn't want a certain level of furniture, you know, real high-end leather-type furniture that was also qualified in this bid spec, but there's a whole array of stuff that would qualify under that, that price range and, and would be more acceptable to the application. So, I mean, the, the bid that came in from NVP was a different quality than what Mr. Kulp bid, but at, both of them attended the pre-bid meeting and I think understood, or at least I thought understood, what was being asked.
We tried to provide what would fit the needs of the airport for now and 10, 15 years from now, not just save a few bucks now and pay more later.
Well, we have a whole host of people, but we'll start in the back row with Mr. McKenzie. Kim, could you be available for comment if necessary? Mr. McKenzie.
Yeah, Kim, I guess I'm getting from you that, that maybe the furniture that you'll ultimately get will be not so good, it'll be kind of not, the quality won't be so good?
It will be adequate. You know, there, it will be adequate for the short term, yes. I mean, what you're, what you're being, getting will be adequate, but it will not be what, you know, was worked out that would fit the best in the situation.
How long would, how long would you expect something like, you know, furniture like this to last? I mean, is it quality enough to last 20 years, 10 years, 20 years?
Hmm, it depends upon how you want it to look down the road, you know, how, you know, I guess that's the, the line. How, you know, you, when you buy furniture, it, it all looks good when you bring it home, but how it looks five and 10 years from now is another story.
Yeah. Well, what you're saying, I mean, you have a lot of valid points there, so that's what I'm wondering is Jeff, could we have it re-bid with more than, more than two bidders? I mean, is that a possibility or?
I guess there's a time element too, because they do want to open the airport sometimes.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I guess just to go back to that, I mean, if you read the memo that came to the council, there were 58 suppliers that downloaded information off this bid, off a demand star. Or, well, 58 were notified, six downloaded the actual proposal package and two bid, that's all we got. Both from the Twin Ports. And it, and it should be up to the city to specify the quality. I mean, there's a, a range of quality that we can get in that commercial-grade furniture. I guess right out of the gate, we did hire Tri-State to go into the airport building and walk each room. We paid them a fee to go in each room and determine how many pieces of furniture would logically fit in those rooms. And we used their drawings to, and generate the numbers of chairs and desks and tables that we were actually going out for bid on. And like I said, we had a pre-bid meeting and Nancy was there and explained to everybody that we weren't looking for high-end type furniture, we wanted something durable, something cleanable. And we did specify some warranty, I mean, all of this furniture has a good warranty with it. And reading from this email I've got here from Nancy, I know she's talking to you, Kim, that NVP and your firm both have suppliers with some of the same brands and that on some of the same furniture, you both indicated that they could get a better price than you could because of the volume they deal in, so.
On a few of the items, the Han items, they buy direct, we buy, we, you know, they buy a greater volume. However, they bid a 10-5 series Han, which is one of their lower levels. We bid a 10-7, which is a higher grade. And if you, you know, see offices where both have been in, used for a number of years, you can see the difference. You know, but you pay a few more dollars upfront.
Okay, but we did pay for your services though.
Yes, our interior designer. And then out of that, she, you know, worked with them what, what they need, what the needs were.
And you're getting, and you're getting enough, enough, I'm sorry, just one more thing. You're getting enough pieces of furniture with this bid, this low figure, I mean, you're gonna get enough pieces and it's, the quality is okay?
Yeah, that's, yeah. I mean, they, I think they bid piece for piece, but it's just different level of furniture.
Okay, all right. Mr. Bender.
Yeah, I just had a question for Kim for clarification. So, Kim, what you're saying, if I understand this correctly, is that maybe the bid process was not specific enough?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Well, then, I would make a motion to have this re-bid.
Yeah.
With, 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 with very careful spec.
I, I just say, there, there's a time element involved and, you know, we're, you're up against the limit if you want to open it on time.
Yeah, we have to accept Mr. Getzmann's explanation that there was adequate explanation of the quality range and product that was going to be put into that bid. And that I do understand is when you misbid as a, as a bidder, that's, that's your peril.
Okay.
And so we can't take the peril out of the bidding process or we'll start a real problem here.
Well, then I'll withdraw my request.
I was just making an inquiry about whether the, inquiry I had of Mr. Kulp was just whether there was a specific enough quality range in the bid to be able to knowledgeably bid. And after hearing Mr. Getzmann, I'm, I seem to be satisfied with that, but.
I disagree, excuse me, I disagree with that, but, you know.
Okay, Mr. Henry.
Yeah, just a question, and it may have already been answered, but maybe I didn't quite understand it. No. At some point in time ago, we had to have developed standards that we're looking for. Somebody developed it. Who developed it? Was that, is that what they're talking about with your, your business went in and helped develop the standards of, of what we needed to buy or was that done previous, previously?
Our, our interior designer went in and pretty much did furniture placement and she specified, you know, the quality, but when the bid went out, that, it was just basically specified desk, you know, not what quality, what type. It was specified chair for the, like, the lobby room or the lounge area, not the qual, you know, we specified, you know, Debbie specified the quality, her recommendations, but when the bid came out, it was very vague on what the, the quality was. They just said, you know, "commercial quality," well, that's everything from the, you know, the plastic lawn chairs up to the, you know.
All right. Mr. Olson.
Jeff, just for you, the, the number of pieces of furniture on Tri-State and Northern Business Products was the same exact bid?
Yep.
Okay. And then for you, Mr. Kulp, the, the Han products are basically the cabinets, the steel cabinets?
That was some desking was the Han products. You know, and they're a good product, you know, manufacturer, quality mid-level manufacturer, but they have different grades.
I just, I find it a little, you know, disheartening that the bid would be $22,000 higher.
Yeah.
When in, when in.
A lot of the difference is we came in with QF seating in the lounge area, which is a quality of seating that far exceeds, you know, what you have. I mean, it's, it's a quality product, it's going to, in the lobby area, I mean, it'll be around for long after we're gone. And I'm not sure what they bid. And also, you know, after the bid process, you know, we weren't really notified what the deal was until we had to contact the city to see how things were, so.
And Debbie used to work for Northern Business Products.
Yes.
So she, she would know both suppliers per se.
But we decided to go with a quality route, something that the city could be proud of for a long time, rather than go with just filling a space with a chair or a desk or stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jean.
I guess just a general comment. In a situation like this, we may have any number of potential vendors that want to bid on this and they may have very different opinions on quality and what they think we may want. But it was very clear in the pre-bid meeting, it was, it was laid out for the two bidders what we were looking for. And so I don't, I don't have the bid documents in front of me, but both of the, both of these vendors were told, we're not looking for, for example, leather seating or whatever the QF seating is. They were specifically told that we wanted to go with something at a, that was going to come in at a lower cost. So they can make any number of recommendations on what they think we should have, but then ultimately, somebody from city administration has to bring it forward to you with a recommendation. And that's what Mr. Getzmann has done, considering budget and other project costs associated with this.
But I learned one thing in the process, when you bid for the city.
Okay. Okay. Just.
Well, Kim, I just, you know, I, I, I see that you're, you're not interested in holding up the airport project, so.
Right.
I guess, am I right in assuming is you're not asking us to re-bid this?
I'm just letting you know how the process.
So you're, you're just providing us information that in the future, you would like to see bids of this type with more specificity.
Right.
And I can't, I can't disagree with that.
Yeah, because I could go in and, I could have bid the cheapest stuff out there and come in and then raise it $8,000 after the bid's let, you know? That's pretty easy to do.
It reminds me of a movie I saw once, where a guy painted a chair with a brush and somebody was timing him as to how long it would take. And it took him three-quarters of an hour to paint that chair with the brush. And so the person he was bidding with, "Okay, it's gonna take you three-quarters of an hour." So they, they, that's what they based their bid on and that's what the, the company paid them to do. Soon as the guy was gone, out of sight, he took out a spray painter and ch-ch-ch-ch-ch. And so it actually took him five minutes to paint, to paint the chair. So I guess you gotta kind of beware.
Well, thank, thank you for letting me speak.
Motion on the floor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No.
Item 10 is resolutions. 10.1, a resolution by Counselor Bridge requesting the Common Council support the preservation and protection of Wisconsin Point and surrounding area as Superior Day is issued.
Second.
10.2 is a resolution of the Common Council approving the form of notice of lease real property, Fraser Shipyard.
Moved and approved.
Second.
Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Dahlbeck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. 10.2 passes.
11.1, an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Committee amending the traffic code by adding no parking on the north and south of driveways, the driveways at 1701 and 03 John Avenue.
Motion to approve. Second. Counselor Finzler, seconded by Counselor Dahlbeck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. 11.1 passes.
11.2 is an ordinance amending the traffic code, adding one and two-way stops at East 7th Street at First Avenue East.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Dahlbeck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. 11.2 passes.
An ordinance introduced by the Public Works Committee amending the traffic code by deleting the speed limit between North 28th and East 10th Streets, 35 miles an hour, and 28th Street between Hammond and Tower Avenues, 30 miles an hour, and adding 25 miles per hour from North 28th Street between East 10th and Tower Avenue.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Counselor Bender, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, Counselor Anderson.
We discussed this quite a bit at, at Public Works and I've driven this stretch several times in the last, last week trying to get a sense of, of what the speed limit should be out there. And it seems very difficult to maintain that speed out there at 25. And so I, I think it's probably the, what I would like us to do is refer this for further study. Because I, you know, it's one thing to set up a speed limit, but if nobody's gonna go that speed limit, then the speed limit is actually what people are gonna be driving. And I think we need to look at this a little bit closer. The issue out there is a, is a, is a single issue involving pedestrian crossing and sidewalks. And so I think, I think we need to have a little bit of, more of a study of that corridor to determine if 25 is the right speed limit. I'm not sure that it is. And, you know, it might, May 30 might be the right speed limit, but I, I'm not sure that 25 is the right speed limit for that road, even though we have one safety issue involving a pedestrian. And I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna people to think that we're in any way minimizing the pedestrian safety in that stretch, but this is a very, very well-traveled road and I'm not sure that the speed limit we've just sort of arbitrarily designated here is actually the right one for that road. And I think we should have it studied properly.
Okay, and we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, then, then it ends discussion and is referred back to Public Works.
Well, my light was on before that. Can I discuss it or not?
No, because actually what happens is there's a motion to refer back and then the discussion will take place there is how, why, why we have that in.
Before the second?
What's that? What's that? Yes, there was three seconds, I believe.
No, I say I did it before the second, but.
Correct. Do you, do you want to discuss?
Well, I just want to mention, I, I agree with, with Ed that maybe you need further study on it. When I first looked at it, I thought they'd probably gotten over it real carefully, and, and I, you know, looked at it and would've been in favor of it, but, you know, after Ed's comment, it, you know, it hits me that that's a weird street, 28th Street, because it is, it's weird.
Yes, I agree.
And it, it appears to have some design on it, like, you know, like in the past, people were trying to make it a, a main drag, and, and there's very few ways to get from that, that area on Tower Avenue over to the east end area. You can go down, you know, Bellnapp, you can go, I think it's 30 miles an hour maybe on Bellnapp, and there, you know, 28th, parts of it were widened out like they're, almost like somebody was gonna make it a highway. Parts of it are narrow, almost like it's a pedestrian street. So, it's kind of a weird street. And, and a suggestion to, you know, if Ed thinks it needs further study, I, I think I'm sure in agreement with that.
Okay, we have a motion to refer, we'll refer this back to Public Works for further discussion and a possible study. We have a motion, and there were three seconds on this, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no.
No.
Okay, we have one no, and 11.3 goes back to committee. And I think we need a motion to adjourn, right?
Second.
Very good.
Thank you.